Everybody, I'm calling to order the revenue neutral meeting. Hearing. Before we go into the meeting, I'd like to have silence for everybody and maybe reflect on the events that occurred 22 years ago today and the suffering of people. Let's have about 30 seconds. Okay, call the order. Mr. Goodman. Mr. Murphy. Paul. Ms. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Wells. That sounded like her. And me. Like Carney. Okay. So get the speakers. First speaker. Doug Darling.
So just a little bit about how the process will work tonight. There'll be a total of two hearings. The first hearing is for revenue neutral. The second hearing is for the budget in general. Each hearing will officially open followed by the subsequent action and then that hearing will close prior to the new hearing. So the first hearing again is revenue neutral. We'll use the same three minute time limit that we do for our normal proceedings and these will simply appear in the order that's signed up at the door of the Potter. So, but we will make sure we have a final call before we close each meeting. Any questions? To clarify that, because this is not something we do every meeting.
My name is Douglas Sterling. I live in Shannon Woods in Leavenworth, Kansas. I don't have any kids currently in the district. My sons graduated from LHS and all the way through the Leavenworth school system. I'm here to urge the board to vote against revenue. I wish to quote, "District policy be a goals and objectives of board shall provide the best education possible within the financial limitations of the district." And to me, the financial limitations is what the state legislature provides for what your budget's going to be. This is going to cost me more money. My house valuation went up 14%. That's just the way it is. I was in a first grade class today. Those kids need lots and lots of help. They need the resources to do it and budget neutral is not going to give it. I was in a fifth grade classroom last Friday. They need help as well. Once again, you don't do budget neutral. Everything else is going up. Evergy's trying to increase 14% on their electric rate. We've got a lot of stuff and Matt could tell you how much that would cost in addition. Maintenance costs on facilities run between one and four percent a year for budgeting purposes with over $230 million. That's a good chunk of change, 2.3 million. And that's at the 1% level. If we have a major event, it goes up significantly. And it's not like Kansas doesn't have tornadoes and hailstorms. And thank you for your attention.
Price.
Good evening. My name is Eric Price. I live in North Broadway and have had a child in the district for the last 12 years. Like I'm sure many here, I'm here because of the possible, because this is possibly one of the most important board meetings of the year as the board finalizes the budget. A lot of misinformation continues to abound regarding the process and the district's impact on taxes. As I noted last month, from 2013 to 2023, the taxes allocated in the school budget went up by only 9%, while my property taxes went up by 26%. It shows clearly that there's not a direct one-to-one correlation between the school budget and my tax bill, as some would have you believe. More importantly, again, as I stated last month, based on the Consumer Price Index from the US government, 2013's $12 million budget would cost $16 million today, which is even more than we're asking for in the 2024 budget. So as I stated, our budget isn't even keeping up with the cost of inflation. Interestingly, inflation has been given as an argument for the revenue neutral. That is, that we shouldn't raise taxes on individuals who are having to deal with the costs of inflation. Such a claim sounds reasonable, but it is devoid of real logic. Inflation impacts everyone, not just our taxpaying families. It impacts the businesses, the vendors, and the agency that this district has to deal with in delivering on its mission of education to our children for the future. Who among us would sit in an annual review with our employer and note out loud that our rent had gone up by 20%, our fuel costs by 10%, the cost of our scrubs, if I'm working in the hospital, by 12% and so on, and then demand not to be given a raise or a cost of living increase, but to be paid exactly the same amount that we had been paid the year before? Our costs are up, but so are the costs of the district. They reported two or three months ago nearly a 20% cost increase in insurance and a similar increase in cost of bus services. So our questions need to focus on what our kids are getting for the money spent and what risks are posed by revenue neutral budget that is $2 million less than what's being requested. We all know that not spending money can sometimes cost you money. Insurance being a perfect example of that phenomenon. What suffers if we continue to fail to even keep pace with the increased cost in goods and services required by the district and what second and third order effects emerge? It is lousy fiscal strategy to demand that regardless of the financial needs and requirements of a family or a school district, that we would demand to keep income fixed. You wouldn't do that to your own family and you wouldn't ask that of your own employer. At a time when the challenges I had made for steep climbing, the last thing we want is to throw this thing neutral and pursue a budget strategy that only sends us backwards. Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin, here.
Good evening to the board. My name is James Baldwin, well-known as JB. I'm just going to make a short brief. I don't understand why the taxes is going up and I need some estimation. So that's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay, so. We're here.
We just want to confirm, is there anyone else to talk about the revenue neutral hearing? Revenue neutral, going once, go twice.
Okay.
You can close the hearing then and then move on.
Yeah. Revenue neutral hearing is closed. Go to the vote.
Okay, ready? Mr. President, I move the adoption of the following resolution. Resolution 23/24-05, the revenue neutral tax rate. KSA 79-2988 provides that a levy of property taxes defined as the 2023-24 budget of USD 453 exceeds the revenue neutral rate, tax rate to finance 2023-24 budget of USD 453 authorized by a resolution. Therefore, be it resolved by USD 453 that the 2023-24 budget with a levy of property taxes exceeding the revenue neutral tax rates calculated for 2023-2024 as adjusted percent to KSA 79-2988 is hereby adopted. Adopted this 11th day of September 2023 by the Board of Education of United District, excuse me, Unified School District Number 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas. Attested by the Board of Education of Unified School District 453, Leavenworth County, St. Louis, Kansas.
I need to make a motion.
Okay, so just confirming, that motion would be to exceed revenue neutral. Motion given by Mrs. Price just now would be to exceed revenue neutral.
So that's the motion. I'll second it.
I second.
Okay.
We had a motion to exceed with the revenue neutral.
Correct. Just to be clear, this motion is to exceed revenue neutral.
Exceed.
Yep. It has been motioned and now seconded.
Hi Danielle. Again, Mrs. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Powell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
No.
Mr. Goodman?
No.
Mrs. Murphy?
No.
Mrs. Wells? Mrs. Wells there?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
To the vote 43. Eyes. Next.
Mr. Carney, are you adjourning the revenue neutral hearing?
Pardon me?
Are you adjourning the revenue neutral?
I can't hear you.
Are you adjourning the revenue neutral hearing?
Yeah, I just said, I thought. Going on to number five, called over the budget hearing.
Okay, so same process here. We'll go in the order in which these were received. Again, three minutes for the speaker. Mr. Potter's indicating that no one signed up tonight. So this is a first call and second call. Anyone who wish to speak for the budget-related hearing. Budget-related hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Carney, seeing none, I recommend that you close the budget hearing. Proceed with the necessary action.
Okay. Close the budget hearing and move on to item six. No. Seven, the motion to approve the 2324 budget.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of the following resolution. Resolution 23/24-016, Building Needs Assessment, Local Option Budget Percentage and Adoption of the Budget. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, United Unified School District, Number 453, Leavenworth County, Kansas, that on August 3rd, 2023, Building Needs Assessment was provided and evaluated by the Board of Education. The Board of Education shall be authorized to make a local option percentage in an amount of 31.6% for the 2023-2024 school year and hereby adopts the 2023-24 budget as published in the Leavenworth Times.
Okay, so some points to emphasize here. One, you were given the building needs assessment that was done on August the 3rd, if memory serves me correctly. The building needs assessment was a part of our process. The second piece of importance here is that the local option percentage, local option budget percentage, excuse me, is now at the statewide cap of 31.6. So the resolution that Mrs. Price just read establishes both of those.
Do we, that's the motion?
You have a motion on the floor, correct?
I'll second it. We got a motion by Mrs. Price, seconded by Mr. Carney. Roll call.
No roll call is necessary for this.
All in favor?
Mrs. Wells.
Mrs. Wells.
Okay, all opposed? Two?
Yes, please.
It's in at five to two. We'll now adjourn the budget hearing. I have nine. Call the order on the September board meeting. Roll call. We're here.
We didn't do a roll call.
Now would be your time for the official roll call because we went straight to the hearing.
Okay. Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mrs. Reed? Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy? Wells? Here somewhere. I'm here. So. Okay, we got a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and equal.
Roll. Okay, next page. District Mission Statement.
All right, before I read that, in front of you should be a picture of a couple of children that may, may not know. Are we going to put that on the screen or not? No? Okay, that's all right. I'll just display it for the crowd here. And then the finished product is right up here. We just gave that to our district administrative team and this sits right by my keyboard every day. You're going to see the saying, "One simple question, is it good enough for them?" And it's a reminder as we go through our decisions as an administrative team, are the decisions we're making at the building level, district level, or otherwise, is it good enough for them? So the two boys there, they both attend schools in Lawrence 497, those are my nephews, Mason and Miles. But we would encourage you to join our district administrative team with the children that you would like to have reminded of. You can have that picture here at the board meeting or at home, wherever it would mean the most to you. And all you need is a JPG and so you can put your children, grandchildren, or as I did, my nephews, right? But again, would encourage you to join us in that reminder of, as we make decisions, what's ultimately best for our students should rise to control of what you think is best for those. With that, Mr. Carney, the mission of Leavenworth Public Schools is to prepare every student for success in every classroom, every day.
Thank you, nobody. Okay. Move patron input.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda and seconded, made the motion, Mrs. Murphy. Second, on favor. It looks like seven zero. Hear anything from?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to remove 10.01, the check register. 10.04, consideration of classroom carpets and so that'll be it.
Okay, we have to.
So that will make 10.1, 11.1. And then 10.04 will be 11.04.
Okay, well, we have to make a motion on first part. Amendment.
We just needed a second on it.
Second.
Mrs. Murphy made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Reed, to amend the agenda, so. Address this. Check register.
I'm sorry, how did you all vote?
Yeah, we need to vote for the amended agenda.
Ms. Reed?
I think it's just.
It's all those in favor.
Yeah, no roll call is necessary.
I think it should be a roll call every time. Okay, go ahead.
All those in favor.
Don't hear anything from Mike?
Yes.
Seven zero. A seven zero. Okay. Sorry.
I just had a couple of questions in going through all this thing since we're doing a budget hearing and passing a budget. And I'm not in the day-to-day grind, but when you go through this checkbook register and you see two and a half, three and a half, four pages of Amazon purchases a month, Walmart purchases a month, I kind of would like a general idea of what that is. Because some of that almost sounds like it could be pre-planning instead of, oh, I forgot to go buy this, let's go run to the store with a district card and swipe it and buy what we need every day, whereas if we're doing the board buy where we can stay doing bulk and have purchases done in advance. I'm trying to weed that out.
Yep. So some of the purchases more than likely at Walmart are exactly as you described, just smaller items for teachers when they're building administrator, hey, I need this little item, I'm working on this project in my classroom, is it possible to go to Walmart and pick that up? Because it's just a smaller quantity and it's a more likely for a one-time. The Amazon purchases, some are probably along that category and some are probably in the larger category. We need to buy a try and think of something that would just.
Well, there's one that pops out to me that's $2,134.62 until July 24.
And I'd have to look at that one specifically.
But that's.
To see what that was. More than likely, it was, I don't, not even, sorry, I shouldn't even say that. But we do have the Amazon business account for the district. So if it is something we bought off of Amazon, it is something we got at the lowest price because the Amazon business account that is always designed to show the district the lowest price for that item.
Which would be like the board buy.
Correct.
Okay, so when we're purchasing furniture for the district, for offices or whatnot, and granted, I'm just used to how government offices usually procure their furniture for whomever's moving into whatever office. Is the Staples office or whoever it is the most affordable thing for that? Because I know I sat there and I furnished with Cherry Furniture from Nebraska Furniture Mart five rooms for the price it did one office here. So I'm kind of like a little amazed at the cost of that. I'm not saying no one deserved or didn't need an upgrade on furniture after something had been used, but it just seems like that.
So we are balancing buying local and getting the best price. And our purchasing policy allows the district to purchase items.
Right, we extended that to $10,000, anything above $10,000 or more, the board would have to vote for it. I remember, we did that based on COVID.
Yes.
Three years ago. How much we had to buy, we had the S or dollars. Dr. Roth had asked if we could extend that. So instead of having to have special meetings every $5,000.
And I believe actually for policy 20.
Same thing, it's just to try and help curtail special meetings all the time because of all the expenses with COVID three years ago, trying to go through all the S dollars and the school needs.
And we also check.
So we have a Staples, we have a Staples in town?
We do not.
So then it's technically not local then?
Correct, we bought from a local. Mr. Duttke got that pricing.
I believe the furniture you're referring to is bought from Leavenworth Paper, which is a local company.
Okay.
And I'd point out that the quality of the furniture that you'd get from a commercial distributor like that over Nebraska Furniture Mart would be the difference in the type on versus an NFM brand. So you're going to be a little bit better on it. So the cost difference, what you're mentioning, that could be one of the differences.
Well, I mean, Braw Hill Cherry Furniture, still Braw Hill Cherry Furniture.
It just depends on if you can sell or not.
Yep.
What did we do with the old equipment or the old furniture?
Specifically, the furniture that from the offices that is in our barn, we redistributed what we could out of the offices in other locations. And then we have a, we have a practice of using Purple Wave a couple times a year and then we liquidate our excess and we have had pretty good results with selling on Purple Wave. So that will be what ends up if they do not find a home.
Okay.
And how critical transparency could we state how much was spent on those two offices this summer?
Have to look.
I have to pull that back up. Give me just a minute. So the two offices together were $7,500.
So the money that we get from Purple Wave, I guess that's not a making money, it's just kind of recouping some of the cost. How does that get factored into our budget?
It is just miscellaneous revenue and is deposited into the general fund of the public depending on what item that sold.
How much do we typically get back from Purple Wave? I mean, I know that's a, that's a pretty big ask, but.
I don't know off the top of my head. Look that up.
It's, one of our better years was over $2,000 and I would say several thousand average.
Because I mean, we sell, we sell cars and equipment and whatever.
Correct.
Computer stuff. So I imagine it swings quite a bit, but just as a ballpark, about one year we had 20, another year.
A couple thousand.
What's, what's the most we've ever gotten?
I think the best, best year was about $20,000.
$20,000.
Somewhere in that area. I mentioned Mrs. Reed, we used to do garage sales and garage sales were a complete waste of time once we found out that Purple Wave existed.
Yeah.
It is the way to go. It's a, yeah.
In order to balance out that ideal of how much we got, we would have to know. Replace that here eventually. I would back up Ms. Murphy as far as the purchase. When I started on the board, we didn't have the credit card statement transparency. Now we have that transparency, but we still don't know exactly what the function was for. If it's a food purchase, who was it for? What was it for? Was there an event? If it's an item purchased from Amazon or something like that, we still don't know what that was for. And so I think that would be great.
What I think Ms. Murphy's main concern is that if, if all these spot buys because we, you know, absolutely need something, it may be better planning could probably be done as far as if you had on, on items that need to be purchased. Obviously, you know, if, if an event happens, we absolutely positively need a whole ton of Scotch tape for it. Then that's just what has to get done. But if these are things that could probably be more foreseeable, if planned out better at the administrative staff, but also at the teaching level, that would probably alleviate some concerns that we have.
Well, my, my concern, I realize this is basically a corporation, but at the same standpoint, we're asking our constituents to dig into their pocket and refer back to Mr. Carney last month, stop eating that Big Mac and pay your taxes. This is like nickel and dime in a household budget. And this is a house, it happens to be a really big house. And I don't know any common American or anyone even in the African community that can have their budget nickled and dimed like this. It's pretty extraordinary. One of these has at least four trips to Walmart in one day. And when we say we're going to do local, one of the reasons why we brought Chartwells on in order to help boost the food and morale and everyone else in the school district and then their capable, you know, they expressed they would cater anything we wanted. And then we turn around and yes, we supported a local business, but we got donuts for over $1,000 that I know Chartwells could have done on their own.
Mrs. Wells, she told us to do that. They said they couldn't that morning. That was for the breakfast and that was actually not paid by the district. It was actually paid by Main Street. We just picked them up and they reimbursed us for that.
Okay, because that doesn't show up or doesn't. Right. And that, I can understand that then and then that's fine.
But if the Cardinals asked us, did we just kind of onboard?
Yeah, and it was a little tight.
They, well, they just didn't have the staff or the training yet.
Right.
And so they asked us to cover that.
So if we could maybe have this reflect when we are having some, a reimbursement from the credit union or something like that, that might be good to reflect that way we see that line by line.
Yes.
Can't speak to that.
Right, no, I'm just.
Unfortunately, the timing doesn't always work out.
And I understand that, but we can do that.
Beth, is it possible to categorize the purchases? That's part of the problem. I mean, I look at that and you do get overwhelmed just looking at it. As a check register, you know, it's to do something. And I guess one of my concerns would be that there's always a statement that our teachers are buying out of their pocket to get items in the classroom to meet their needs. And that's really what this credit card purchase process in my mind was intended to do. And we can't see whether that's being used to contribute into the classroom and whether or not it's meeting the needs of our teachers so they don't have to take the money out of their pocket to, to meet classroom needs. So if we could categorize it in a way that it would kind of tell us those things, for me, I can't think of the other, but for me, that would be helpful.
Yes. Thank you.
I stand.
It's my understanding that, I'm sorry. Can you guys?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
It's my understanding that that's, that's team goes through each purchase that's made with the district credit cards that is held by team. This is not new. This is something that's gone on forever. I'm glad that other members of the board are now paying attention to it. If you guys will recall, years, for years and years and years, Mr. Darling would go through and ask specific questions about specific line items, whatever he questioned to purchase, we all.
Right, but when you're doing three and a half pages.
This is nothing new. This is nothing new. We've given our staff the authority to spend up to twenty thousand dollars. Yes, we need to make sure that there's oversight, that's what their job is to do. So you're questioning them and their ability to do their job.
No, I'm questioning the amount of transactions on a day-to-day basis, just hopping over to Walmart or Sam's Club or Amazon online. It's a lot. And if you're asking the constituent to go in and take their last bit out of their pocket, then I think we need to do our due diligence to make sure that we're doing that purchasing in a more mindful way. And that is not a bad thing to do. Anyone that's managing a budget right now, I watched the news on, uh, Saturday, which I don't normally do, but KSHB sat there and said rent Kansas City's up sixteen percent. I've talked to real estate agents, it's up about sixteen percent here. You've got families on fixed incomes, that their rent's gone up sixteen percent this year. Gas is going up fifty cents to a dollar in this next week and they've promised that. These people that live in our community whose incomes are not changing regardless of anything, or they might see three percent in January if they're lucky on their social security card, is not going to match up with everything they're having to pay to Everji, to the gas station or the grocery store. And I see people crying at checkout at the grocery store every day because of how expensive it is. So yes, as we budget to try and give the kids the best of everything we need, we must be mindful of every dime we spend. And it cannot be willy-nilly. And I'm not saying we don't need a box of staples or we don't need a, a case of, uh, construction paper or whatever it may be, but I think we need to be very mindful and some things could maybe be planned out a little bit better for a more board buy purchase.
Ms. Maddox, could you clarify how much was spent in Amazon purchases last month?
Uh, I did not add it up, so I can't get back to you on that, but I will. I mean, I, yes, there is a.
Or do you know approximately an average of how much is spent on Amazon every month?
I do not look at that detail, so no. But I look, I look at the total purchasing card payment that the district made. And on average, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a month. It's the total of the card purchase.
Thank you.
And yes, we do look at every purchase transaction on the purchasing card as well as every voice that receives a check payment.
Thank you.
Okay. If I could bring up a different issue than what we're discussing out of the check register, and glad it got pulled out, is there was a purchase in there for tweens and teens? And it's for social thinking. So it would be possible to get a briefing on how that fits into the curriculum that we've got. And what, what's the void, what is the word attacking by buying this curriculum? We've got Character Strong, we went through all that. I would hope that, uh, we can see how this applies into our curriculum fully transparent, so that there's no questions later on on how it works in our curriculum and get rid of, ensure that we have dealt with any concerns.
That is, uh, intervention-based, evidence-based intervention appropriate to receive special education services for social skills. So that would be what that intervention is.
Is that for our elementary buildings? I wasn't sure what the note on there, it said ELE, so.
But could we get?
Well, teens and tweens would be like that. And all. I'd say intermediate to middle school.
Okay.
The, the teens and tweens is kind of a subset of the overall social skills curriculum that we purchase.
So age ten and above.
Yeah, tweens too.
Yeah.
So anyway, could we get some information on it and maybe just kind of lay out, see how that's, that fits?
Is that something that we didn't have before?
Um, it's intervention-based, but based on each individual student's needs, based on an evaluation that takes place, um, through the special education program. And whatever skill set that's being, meaning having deficits in, we make determinations based on that deficit and what intervention addresses that deficit.
How long have we been using that specific service?
Um, I believe, um, we have a, Beth, did you supply the information?
Yes.
We've supplied the information in regards to the, um, link we can find.
Uh huh.
Information, so if you want anything in addition to that, we're happy to provide that.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, anything else? Thank you.
Anything else? Move on to.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the check register.
Second.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mrs. Murphy. On favor?
Mrs. Price. By Mrs. Price.
One drug. Okay, this is Price. This is Price, all in favor? Six one. Moving on to the consideration of classroom carpet.
Okay, so this would now be eleven point two if I'm tracking correctly on the agenda. All right, so Mrs. Batson, as well as Mr. Dedeky, did some research with our elementary teachers and they are prepared to present on that. Uh, so I'll turn it over to those two capable individuals, take it away.
Absolutely, thanks, thank you. Dedeky and I spent the last month learning more about classroom carpets and rad pads than we ever knew before. So in this, one of the things we got after the last board meeting. Just to make sure we have kind of common understanding. Um, most classrooms at this type of carpet, it might have had a different line on it. But most of our elementary schools had this type of carpet in every classroom prior to COVID. It was a use as a big transition piece, it's where they, their meetings, they would do their IRAs there. Literacy centers might be there, it was a pretty stable, smaller elementary. During COVID, all carpets were removed. And during the process, we started transitioning to rad pads, all right? And our, some of our elementaries have them, our intermediate and early learning centers have these. Students would use these pads when they're in centers, anytime they were on the floor. They also could be at the desk and without a sensor. So last board meeting, this, uh, Matt had put in a request for these. We asked for a confirmation, which is when I got a call. And then so from there, on the twenty-second, I created a survey together for teacher perceptions concerning classroom carpet. And then the survey was sent out to all first grade or grade certified teachers. From there, I met with Karen to kind of work through the initial data, through what our recommendation would be, what we were thinking from there. Uh, and Matt and I began discussing what it would apply for. We put the title out of the first initial carpet in there. And on September eighth, last Friday, you should have gotten in your board FYI, a copy of the confirmation that went over that and then a book here from there tonight. So survey was anonymous. It didn't matter to me, you know, which teacher said what. So I honestly don't know, broken down by building, broken down by grade, we're presenting this aggregate data as just a total from there. We, uh, we sent the survey to eighty-six teachers, we had a really strong return rate, fifty-four point seven percent. So forty-seven teachers completed the survey, uh, from there. So this is where we are, we have about sixty percent of our teachers currently in elementary do not have a classic carpet in their room, but about forty do, forty percent do. And then, uh, seventy-eight point three, so about eighty percent of our teachers have rad pads in their classrooms and about twenty percent do. So when asked for appropriate, so it's an overwhelming majority of teachers heard a classroom carpet, uh, in there. So as you see, that's what we're bringing back to you, um, tonight, in there. So I just kind of, there were, um, there were several themes that emerged, so what I did is kind of took the data and grouped it into themes for each one. Some of the benefits to having classroom carpets was the soft spot for the T D instead of the aluminum or tile floor. It's a great place for group meetings in there and it's an easier management piece. That thing came through lots of different levels. And then as far as transition time and management, that they felt the carpet was a much easier process than the rad pads. Some of the drawbacks are things that we presented last month was the cleanliness on it. It takes up a lot of space and they can't be relocated. Benefits of the rad pads, they can use them wherever they are, they roll on it, they're easier to clean, they don't have a panel. It's comfortable sitting there in the classroom, if you don't have carpets, then they're easier to use and transport. The drawbacks was it doesn't really give that home family feeling to a lot of our elementary teachers they wanted. And the longer transition times before a management piece that went with it. And if students want to use them appropriately, they can be used for toy and or distraction. So in that, um, Matt Dedeky, which he can talk about the actual pricing and numbers and those type of things, put together a quote to give all of our elementary school classrooms carpets. And in the end, that's what we're bringing to you tonight.
All right, so then what you have in front of you tonight is a consideration to buy eighty carpets of similar size. They're going to be an eight by twelve. The picture you saw at the beginning, it looked very similar to that, a blue background. I call it chop dots. Purchase would be made through school specialty using the Green Bush Purchasing Cooperative pricing. So, uh, that would be our, our recommendation at this point. That would give us enough for all the classrooms and then a couple extra. The, uh, rotation that Mrs. Batson talked about, we look at maybe five to seven years doing a refresh on this, um, and then slowly work those in. Uh, the idea being if we had one that was heavily soiled, we could move it out of the classroom, put a fresh one in there, clean it, let it dry, and then return it for use as a replacement. We did include some extra carpets in this quote, uh, for our classrooms. But this is what we're bringing to you based off of this, uh, the survey and the information that's gathered and, uh, that's.
It's about forty thousand dollars cheaper than the rad pad, right? Wouldn't it be worth that?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, and, and I said it was going to be considerably less expensive, uh, but we're, that's all right.
So you're saying five to seven years on these rugs, these are industrial grade, correct? So couldn't we get as many as ten years out of it? I know we've cooperated dental offices where if you're going to sit there and see spots on doing cleanings or whatever else happens in a dental office, they still usually lasted about ten years and they probably have as much traffic as a classroom.
But it's best to, to plan for a five to seven.
Right.
And then put that money out where we don't need it. Thirteen, most of these, the backs are gone, the stains can't get out, things we talked about last time. So we're trying to be proactive, have a plan in place. So when we come back to you in five to seven years and say we need to spend a little bit more, actually hopefully it would be less, so we could just cycle that through with our normal purchases and, uh, keep the classrooms as healthy as we can moving forward.
And I want to clarify, you all said all carpets were removed from all classrooms during COVID.
During COVID, correct.
Were any replaced?
No. Yes, yes, they were reestablished into the classrooms, but they were the existing.
Okay.
All we did was roll them up and store them on stage.
Were they clean or can they be cleaned and still utilized in some kind of rotation part if they're still presentable?
We will evaluate them if they are, yes. But I'm going to say a majority of these will probably go in the garbage.
Right.
Because of their condition.
Right, I just want to clarify that, you know, they would get checked, cleaned, whatever, if they look good enough, be in a rotate. Okay.
And I will, I will say, my department will make that judgment call on whether they go back to my classroom, respectfully. Just to make sure that we don't have arguments with the buildings for what should or should not go back in.
Right.
If we replace all the carpets, we will be.
Uniform.
Yes.
Just to clarify, these are identical rugs to what they're asking. These are different.
So this carpet that's in the image, it looks very similar, I had a hyperlink and.
This is a picture of one of our classrooms.
Current classrooms, yes. And I provided you a hyperlink to the school sketch site that gave you an image. The dots are just like, they look like a chalk circle versus a hard format circle.
I just wanted to, for transparency, state that these are similar to what they have now.
Very similar.
With similar like rugs.
If, if anything, these are maybe six, eight inches bigger than what we have right now, just because of the current size.
And I could have probably saved this for my board comments, but I would just like to mention for those, you know, here right now and watching right now that might not be later, that, uh, that started with, in my opinion, one teacher speaking out and started a ball rolling of more teachers reaching out to board members specifically and making sure that their voices were heard at a district level. And then I would also ask teacher departments before they make a presentation that they talk to the teachers. This was a great, uh, thing that was done and I complimented Mr. Doctor, sorry, Adams earlier today on doing this type of communication, I think it's great, so I'd love to see more of it.
And thank you, Beth, for surveying them, even though we were already getting feedback. I appreciate the fact that the classrooms were surveyed.
For sure.
Matt, one of the things we did talk about was, uh, were there alternative, uh, materials that might be less hyperaldogenic and easier to clean and, and those kinds of things? Were there any alternatives?
Alternatives are not, I don't think, as robust as a carpet or the rad pad. What we found were what Mrs. Reed had mentioned were kind of the connecting pieces. Uh, what we found was they were more of an open cell material versus a closed cell. So that's a difference of thickness and durability.
Right.
Uh, so we quickly kind of moved past those. It went back to either or situation because they're both, uh, pretty well proven in a school setting. The other items we have seen in our elementary prior to the remodel, we used it as kind of a test piece, but, uh, I don't think it would hold up day-to-day use like this.
Okay, thank you.
And then everything else would be more of a vinyl, so then you're actually just using the floor.
Are those carpets treated with like a Scotch card style thing to help minimize some of the stain?
I, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to do some checking to see, but I would imagine it would have some sort of stain protection on them. But I mean, they sell them for the schools, I, I don't know, I'd have to check.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, if nobody has any other questions, to approve the purchase of eighty childcraft chalk fart classroom carpets in the amount of thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mrs. Reed, did I get that right? Okay. Seven zero, I didn't hear anything from. I didn't hear nothing to.
Mrs. Wells, are you still out there? It appears she is no longer on the Zoom, so six.
Six zero then, six zero. Number twelve, we're twelve now, correct?
Correct.
Kansas Association School Board Conference.
All right, so this conference is approaching shortly, Saturday, November eleventh is the date of significance here. As you're likely well aware, this is the annual conference for the association and we have a delegate assembly that occurs. The time of day is from eleven o'clock until twelve forty-five. And so what we are requesting tonight is action to effectively approve your delegate for the conference.
I'd like to make a motion, Mrs. Price be our delegate.
Is, is that something Mrs. Price would like to do?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't hear a second, am I going to second?
Well, I don't think you can second that, sorry.
Well, am I going to second or not? That's my point. I know that, I know that, Mrs. Murphy, that's why I'm saying, am I going to second?
Uh, I'll, I'll second it, is, is there anybody else that desires to go?
The desire's fine, but you got to go to the delegate assembly.
Right.
If you're a delegate, it hasn't happened in that.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes.
What are you referring to?
Did you go to the delegate assembly and vote?
Was I present for the vote via Zoom? Yes.
Via Zoom?
Which counted the same as if I was present.
Yeah, okay, whatever. Do you want to be the delegate in Zoom again, or you're going to go to me?
I just wanted to clarify your status.
Okay.
You just sent a single delegate then?
So
One for me?
One vote per district, correct?
So did we get a second then?
You had a motion by Carney, seconded by Goodman, is what I heard.
Okay.
All right.
I'm provoked. All in favor? Five, one? Mike, would you do that?
All right, so Mrs. Shoemaker will turn that in before our deadline of Friday, November the third. And I would encourage any input to Mrs. Price ahead of November eleventh for purposes of her votes.
Okay, item thirteen, the National School Board Association.
Item thirteen is informational only. It's to bring awareness for the fact that the national conference from the National School Board Association will be held April sixth through the eighth. The location this year is New Orleans. And as you can imagine, hotel rooms and all that are what drives the registration at this time of year. And so we would kindly request, if you would like to attend, to get that into Brenda. So that way we can make sure that your registration, realizing some of the discount with early bird and so forth. Can I answer any questions? Straightforward.
Okay, item fourteen?
All right, item fourteen is related to new board policy that came into effect with the two thousand twenty-two legislative session and ultimately goes into effect July one of two thousand twenty-four. So you may have heard about this already. We have essentially been waiting on recommendations and or effective, effective recommendations from KSB and others for policy. So attached to board docs was an example, I want to emphasize that, an example of enrollment for non-resident students. So that was attachment number one. Attachment two was the public notice of hearing that is required. And I would liken this similar to what you did earlier tonight, where you'll have a public hearing that will allow input from the patrons regarding said policy. And then tonight, what I want to do is just briefly touch on some of the points as well as go over the timeline so that you can see some of the major milestones that are coming up next. So Mr. Harrod, if you would please navigate to that third attachment or we'll hit on a couple of those milestones that are coming up. So obviously here tonight for the September board meeting, we are talking about the major tenants of the new legislation. And so for those watching or maybe hearing about this for the first time, for years, Kansas USDs have been able to accept out of district students, but have not been required to accept out of district students. Our five-year average, correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Sloan, was right around one hundred and fifty students. So in the neighborhood of thirty-six hundred students per year, only a one hundred and fifty are received from out of district, if that makes sense, right? Obviously, there are two hundred and eighty-six school districts in the state of Kansas. Some deal with that on a much larger scale than others. What this requires is that every district will establish the same timeline each year, creating capacity. And that capacity deals with how many students a classroom and or a grade level and or a building can adequately take. That capacity is determined locally in May, at which point then the application windows open up on June one of each year. And then by June thirtieth, the application window closes and the moniker that has been used is the lottery. And so students are entered, out of district students, that is, are entered into an effective lottery that then determines whether or not they make the cut for out of district. Again, that is driven largely by the capacity that is established each May. A good thing for us is unless you build a new building or change classrooms, your capacity in theory should be able to stay the same every year. That makes sense. What changes for you each year then is how many students applied or did not apply during the application window. I'm covering this at a five thousand percent view tonight intentionally, right? But again, that is just informational only, so happy to answer any questions we can.
Yeah, I understand the lottery process. We have to have some balanced way of picking evenly if we could. But the law also requires us to provide the priority to certain groups and category of students. Is that pre-lottery? Do we look at and stack them based upon the prioritized groupings that get first cut out? How is, in your mind, how do you see us doing that? So it's very, we honor those commitments to the groupings as well as being fair to the rest of the students. So how do you see that?
To back end on that, this is just for more clarification. As in, let's say you have this saying, out of the one hundred and fifty, fifty of which keep getting grandfathered in every year because this is what their family has always done, would they also be one of the ones prioritized rather than be jumped in the pot? And two are taken in and one is not.
So these are great questions. So one, I'm making sure Mrs. Sloan is taking notes because we're going to promise to answer each one of these questions. But I'm going to answer or attempt to answer the first one because that has come up and it may, may answer your question. The district is allowed to set criteria for attendance and discipline or behavior. What the district cannot discriminate on is special needs or an English language learner. And again, I'm just using broad examples here to hopefully illustrate my point on the criteria we can and cannot set. So I hope that answers your question again at a broader level, does that?
It sort of starts to, but I think we'll, we'll see the specifics later on. But I just wanted to raise that question in the beginning because when I read it, it was kind of like a catch twenty-two in trying to be fair and having a lottery. And so I was curious to see how we were going to try and balance that. I can wait for an answer.
Well, I was going to say there's different subgroups. One that affects us more than any other is our military. And so our military, obviously, it's priority. So those students can go out in.
So if you had twenty students and ten of them were military, you'd go ten military and then you would model the rest of them?
Yes. Yes. And we bring these numbers to you based off of, one of the factors we didn't mention is availability of staff. So that's a huge piece with us, as you know, we have several openings. So we'll come to you next month with recommendations. We just discussed this with all of our administration, kind of gave them the same thing that you received tonight, we gave them Tuesday. Thursday last week. Thank you, Thursday last week. And so we'll meet with each of our administration buildings to help with the planning and the ratio as far as capacity.
But and so back to what you'd stated earlier, in general, we would see it probably would be common for certain things across each year, but the capacity based on our teacher load and our teacher fills seem like drive that, particularly since we are trying to keep the student to teacher ratio down because that's part of the trying to address the outcomes for our kids.
Yep.
So are we, you expect to ask the board to establish a target, the student to teacher ratio?
We'll come to you with the recommendations, similar to what, when I present in October every year. I've always been directed by this board, it's never been a policy. But like in the primary grades, you guys established for me that I needed this date and I have eighteen to twenty range. So we're going to go through and do that and make a recommendation to you in addition considering the teacher availability and class sizes and things like that. We also are anticipating rollover, so we're going to make sure there's always space for our current residents, students that reside within our district. And it may vary from year to year. So in May, we'll have a number for every grade, maybe for example, twenty-five for every grade level. That's probably doable. That's middle of the road, I would consider. I don't think we're going to go real high on certain things. We've already spoken to Mr. Bannick. He is very familiar with the military. They don't anticipate, it's mainly going to probably anticipate it affecting more of our intermediate and middle school and some of our elementaries as well.
I would see in the future if our investment in Lawson continues as it appears to. I, as a parent, would want to take my kid to Lawson. And I would see Lawson possibly being an area where we have to be careful with
Absolutely.
That ratio because of that.
Well, in our focus.
It grows there last year, I think.
Yes, so.
Our recommendations for capacity are going to be heavily based on what's best for construction versus what the bricks and mortar can sustain. And so as we bring to you, say, an eighteen to twenty ratio, that classroom of nine hundred square feet may be able to sustain many more bodies in that classroom, but we don't think it's what's best for kids or what's best for construction. Does that make sense?
So the policy that's included in here, is this Casby written?
Yep, so that's just an example of current. I want to, I want to make that very clear. That was simply their attempt to help districts because this is brand new for every district, right? So, yeah, so two items in there that are both just purely examples. The first of which is that notice of public hearing and then the second of which is that policy.
How much of this do you anticipate we're probably going to change or rewrite?
Oh, I don't have a
Is this something that's been posted to the public or is this exactly?
Yep, so we did make that public for everybody to see what's recommended at the state level. So
Reading through it, I mean, it does kind of address some of the concern that we have. Because that's kind of part of my concern is I don't want to have a situation where we have people that are a permanent party up against, hey, we accepted two of the out of district students and now we can't fit an in-district student. How do we handle a situation like that?
That was really where my question was on student load. If we set a target of fifteen to twenty students and that then becomes our standard to accept out of district students, we still have, say, the twenty-five is the lower target except for extenuating circumstances. And what fill that twenty-five would be in exactly what you're saying.
And if we've already because, you know, if, if an eighth grader, you know, we accept an eighth grader and then, you know, their little brother gets old enough to be in the school, you know. I don't want to say, no, sorry, you can't come in, but then again, you know, that's kind of the issue that we need to have a policy on, I guess.
Yep.
Can we get impressions on that?
So at the elementary through our intermediate, we're, we're only accepting or have roughly twenty to twenty-five out of district. It's all secondary. It's our district, they're mainly all secondary. The other thing that we're really going to have to focus on is changing the habits of enrollment. In our district, since I've been here, it's always been July one is when we open up enrollment. So the cycle is going to change. So when we come next month to you, for example, we talked in the secondary, they start doing pre-enrollment and right after the first year, February, March. So we'll start having to get information out and changing our cycle. And that's going to be really hard for our families because this is the way we've always done it.
Is that part of the law?
Well, as Mr., as Dr. Adams said, we'll come to you in May, we'll tell you what our recommendation is, how many seats we have available. And then the lottery begins from June one through June thirtieth. It's truly a lottery for every, however many out of district transfers that we get. And we just draw out each level, however many open seats.
So, Mr. Goodman, to your question, I'm not aware of a law that drives this, or your enrollment has to be. It's my, my, my perception that current practice would be behind this new timeline. Does that make sense? And so my recommendation to our team was to look at moving that up so that we can align with the other park that's now statutorily bound.
We can't, we can't note we're exceeding capacity unless we've established capacity.
You got it, right.
So, so my thing is, you bring this to us in May, but knowing when our meeting is in May, it's just like right there at the front door to first. Could we get a jump on that timeline and maybe go ahead and do, have that presentation in April? And that way you've got an extra thirty days on that plan.
We are, we are already working on the capacity as we speak, so.
Yeah, but I mean, if you've done it in April, you can actually start opening it up a little bit. Early if you wanted to or needed to. So what we'll do is we'll do, if you think about it, we're going to roll over our students, right? Everybody will assume everybody's coming back. And depending on the grade level, what we recommend to you next month will be our, our ratio for each class, just like we've always done. And then in the spring, when we do our automatic enrollment for the following year, we'll have a number. Yes, it could come up to you as early as April, but we have to do it in May for sure so that we can open or hard open the lottery for students during thirty. Right. Minimum requirement is, or the, I mean, we have to do it in May. We can do it earlier if we know the numbers. Okay. It's truly changing the whole cycle of enrollment. It is, it is. And this is all new for us. So we're learning as we get, as Dr. Adams said.
How are we getting out of district enrollments outside of the timeframe? Life is messy, kids move and, and they show up in December.
So currently, our practice is, we have a policy right now that's in effect. There's a form that they fill when it comes to the district office. We look at enrollment, we look at class sizes right now. I can tell you, we're not accepting out of district transfers for the fifth grade right now. I mean, there's certain grades, certain buildings. It's based off of, just as you're recommending this policy, it's based off of the building and the grade level. I may be allowed, able to let you in at David Brewer, but not at Anthony for that. It just depends. And so they fill out the form and then we immediately notify them and review the, the enrollment data. So we, we typically get them all through the month of June and July. We get very few throughout the course of the year. If a student moves, moves out of town, out into the country, they want to continue here, we allow students to continue the school year. That's a priority for us. We don't want to make a change or placement.
There was a strange petition there for grandfathering out of state students for the next year. Is, do you know what that's all about?
I don't want to misspeak, I'd have to review it. There isn't something regarding out of state, but I don't want to misspeak.
I mean, it seems like it was a grandfather
When we do have a few out of state, it does also allow any employees to continue to attend. So if you, we have a lot of our employees that bring their kids from various districts, so they would automatically be allowed to attend. Okay. And Dr. Adams, just for clarity, this does not affect count day, does it?
What way?
Like, it doesn't shift the date?
Oh, no, nope. So count day will still be on or about September twentieth, which I think will be recorded milestone going forward for many districts as it relates to how they craft their policy. Does that make sense? So a couple of things before I leave this and just review the timeline. I'm not certain how well-known this is to the public, but I think that it is worthy of mention here. One of the challenges we have is with regard to enrollment of students after the school year has started. So even last week, we were still receiving enrollments, right? It's a challenge for our teachers and for administrators and everybody. What we know is we have good data to go back on and look at, what does that look like year to year? So I've instructed the team that we're going to create a threshold, knowing what we know about that, so that we can take that threshold into consideration as we set those various capacity limits. Does that make sense? So for example, if we know that ten percent of our students enroll after the deadline, I want to make sure we've taken that into consideration as we set that capacity. I don't want to set a capacity that then is too high or too low, I should say, right? Knowing full well that we're going to receive enrollment after effect. Does that make sense, Mr. Powell? The second is we are the state's fourth smallest school district geograph. I don't know how many people know that. So we do not transport a vast majority of our students because they're under that two point five mile threshold. That will come into consideration with other districts, but just keep in mind that current policy is not going to allow other districts to come in or out of their current, the neighboring district, okay? That's important. And third, as I think about this, I think about recruitment and retention, not only for our students, but also for our staff. And I think that how we craft this policy goes a long way in that. And so think about how others will be crafting their policies. So let's review the timeline moving forward. We're going to bring to you in October a draft of our recommendations. We're also going to go through a collection of feedback and questions, which I would encourage the seventy of you to do that with me. So please, as you have thoughts, send them my way. Well, we're also going to set the policy hearing date and time and discuss how that process looks. And then we're going to have a publish of a hearing. Again, I liken it to the same process we use for the budget, the R and R, okay? In November, then, we would propose a final, followed by, excuse me, the hearing first, my apologies, with, which would then the public testimony. We would close that hearing and then a final potential approval. That would again be effective July one of two thousand twenty-four. And as you heard, there's a couple of milestones that occur in the spring semester. So no action tonight. Tonight was intended to be very informational in nature and kind of give you the broader overview.
There is one consideration that I would just throw out because I don't want you to do something, have to go back and redo something. Any of us that have lived in the South, this opens itself up for recruitment by special actors. And so I would offer that we should have some provision in there where whether we bring someone in or not, should not be based upon some kind of sports or other recruitment act. It sounds like it would never happen, but if you lived in the South.
It's happened many, it's happened many times in this town, Mr. Powell.
It's not like before where you had to establish, I mean, it's
Yeah, I know, but it's
So.
Been around a long time.
Thank you. Excellent thoughts. I appreciate the conversation. More to follow.
I'm fifteen. Do you have a report now or that was that your?
I do, uh, but we'll keep it brief. Uh, Mr. Herod, are you ready? All right. Uh, so we'd like to introduce a very brief video update that is regarding our strategic plan. As well as provides a refresh on where we've been, as well as a final call to action on the wave of input that we would like to hopefully receive here shortly. So, Mr. Herod, if you would, please.
Preparing everything for success and every classroom every day. That was our, uh, mission statement in two thousand sixteen. That mission statement came from you, the voice of the staff, the district, and the parents of this great community. Now, um, this last school year, you participate, those of you who are returning, you know that you participated in your voice is what has really drove our next steps. So the next steps is creating the new strategic plan. Part of the new strategic plan, we created five categories. You created five categories, your voice and, and the things that you put in thought exchange. Those five categories are teaching and learning, academics, student engagement, support structures, and staffing and personnel. And what is exciting for me is, is that I get to continue to work on this, uh, through December. But I get to pass the majority of it on to Dr. Adams to make this strategic plan come to life, working with you and the pioneer community.
Thank you, Michael. You might be asking, why is the strategic plan important? Ultimately, it engages each one of you, it also guides our work, and finally, it provides focus for us on a regular and consistent basis. Here shortly, our work will shift to phase two. You might be asking, what does phase two encompass? They include the following, first of which is identifying the objectives for this important work. The second is the action steps that will be taken. Third is the resources that will be used. And finally is the performance measures, which we will use to evaluate this important work. This will ultimately culminate with a board review and approval, which is tentatively slated for the October Board meeting.
So just like our previous strategic plan, your voice was what created that. Your voice is what drove that. And I think we accomplished a lot of great things over that plan. It's, it's imperative as times change and, and leadership change, the strategic plan will help guide no matter who's here and what you do. So it's important for you to stay involved, especially since Dr. Adams is taking over, great things are going to happen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this work is so important to the future of our district. We want to hear from you. Your voice and your input are critical to this process. We look forward to working with you in years to come. All right. So as you can see, we're going to open up a window tomorrow and this will be shared out with families, staff on our website tomorrow. And we're going to give folks until Saturday, September the twenty-third to weigh in, do the thought exchange. Uh, we will then obviously collate those thoughts and bring them back ahead of the October Board meeting. That's all I have.
Good job. Okay, executive session number sixteen. Consultation, which one is this? Uh, okay, we're going to go into executive session for consultation with our attorney pursuant to the exception of matters which would be deemed privileged in the Kansas Open Meeting. And the Kansas Open Mean that, then we turn to the session.
My recommendation is fifteen minutes.
Okay, so you.
Yeah.
Second.
That was time.
Fifteen thirty.
Fifteen. Anyone add a bio break or not?
Uh, no, fifteen minutes. We've got another one we can do at that.
All right, fifteen minutes and the time will be. Seven, yeah, seven thirty. Oh, by the way, we do have a board policy about no recording devices in the executive session. This includes phones and laptops and whatever you have. So make sure you leave them in front. I don't think anybody's stealing Jake's watching.
Miranda's always got her eyes on this stuff. We need help.
Let's have a little. Yeah, let's go. I just wanted. Jake, you need these back there. We, oh, all right, where we have the next one? Seventeen?
Ready for item seventeen?
Yep.
Maybe we're making motion? Since I made it the last time.
Mister President, I move we go into an executive session to discuss non-elected personnel pursuant to the exception under the Kansas Open Meeting and comment in order to protect privacy. In the interest of the individuals to be discussing that we return the open session in this room.
Let's go seven forty-two.
Ten minutes. Does anybody need a bio break?
Yeah.
Okay, so five minutes for the.
I think you need five minutes to talk to a, a business for a bio break. We go to the seventh.
Okay, return at seven forty-two. We're inviting Dr. Adams in.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second.
Brother, come on.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Goodman, second. All favor. Okay, we got seven?
Thank you for the report as presented to us.
We need.
Second. Yeah, he was.
Carry on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the staffing report. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy to approve the staff report, second by Mrs. Price, all favor. Six, zero, unless there's somebody going, nope, nobody else. Eight? No, where are we at? Seventeen, no, eighteen.
You're ready for item nineteen?
Got upcoming meeting dates?
Yeah, I see that. You want to read those?
Sure, I would love to. All right, so coming up here in the month of September, we do have a half a day, a full half PD. Here on Wednesday, the one for probably the community is September the twenty-ninth, incoming. After school, and then of course, the infamous parade. Next board meeting, we'll be at the high school. Just a reminder on that, we're going to do one of those per semester. I believe we landed on the library if I'm not mistaken. So six P M. again on the start time for that. Excuse me, I stepped into the cafeteria at the high school. Again, October the ninth. The first quarter on October the tenth, and then you've got a work day followed by our parent teacher on the eleventh, twelfth. November one then is the next district PD day, in which no school will also honor Veterans Day on November the tenth. Your next November board meeting then is at six P M. on the thirteenth, and believe it or not, we're already looking and planning for Thanksgiving break. So that is a preview of the next two and a half months.
Right along. I've been watching this just.
And then before you move on to board comments, if you would, see Mrs. Shoemaker, she's got the resolution.
Make sure.
So please visit her before we leave, missing her on resolution.
Does it really have to be blue ink? Pardon me? Okay.
We would kindly request blue ink before you head out the door. Thank you.
With the blue panel. All righty, nineteen oh three, board member comment. Mr. Powell.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the teachers and administration and all that have continued to start us on a successful year. Thank you so much. The second thing that I'd like to talk to a little bit is about the budget, um, and particularly start talking about unencumbered and, uh, our capital outlay. Just a few things that everybody has to remember. Uh, we're somewhere eight percent plus, uh, paying more this year than we did last year. And it looks like that's what's going to happen next year. So if we're going to continue to provide the quality of services to these kids, so they, give them an opportunity for an outcome. We've got to make up the difference, just like you all do. If we give the teachers a seven percent pay raise this year, we're doing nothing but just keeping up with the cost of living as it's, it's going on. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable saying yes to the budget. I'll just say that. Because I think that, uh, we better do a better job of seeing how we manage it, be more, and, uh, being more, not necessarily transparent, but doing it differently. We don't need the state to tell us how to report or stuff. We need to figure out what's important to us and then design reports so we understand what we're looking at. Because I've, I got to tell you, if you look at it, it can be pretty confusing. But if we just take a look at, at one of the charts that I, Beth, I think so much, are you putting in here? And that wants to actually expenditures for increases. Property insurance, twenty-one point three five percent increase. Can't absorb that. It's still, parent teachers still be able to do the, uh, the type of activities that give our kids opportunities to prepare for the future. Ten percent on all of our utilities. And, uh, my understanding is it's going to fourteen percent possibly, if not more. I don't know whether you guys have looked at the, the diesel prices. Four dollars and seventeen cents. That's a hundred percent increase in the last four years. If you go back, you know, four years ago. That's, and, and that's not even counting the diesel that the, uh, truck drivers pay at the pump, because if you watch diesel, and I do, because I had a diesel truck. They're paying, uh, sometimes as much as dollar and a half more. And guess what that translates to in the service, the services and the products that we buy? It's directly transmitted to us. So, uh, twenty-three percent, um, motor fuel was an increase to our school buses. You know, somewhere in here, and I got to tell you, I'm, I'm really glad that we've got Easton because it's a local company. And they really have been over backwards to try to make it cost effective for our district. Um, if we lose Easton, we're going to be paying a lot more for our transportation. That's just like a feeling, looking at the rates we see in the other, other locations. Diesel fuel at five or six dollars a gallon, Easton's going to have to raise their prices. It's just the fact of life. And then forty percent, uh, for our health insurance. I mean, it's just forty percent increase in health insurance. So I don't think any of us that voted yes for this took this lightly. I mean, it's, we either move forward or, or we move backward in this particular scenario, I believe. And then one last thing that I would ask you all to consider is we're also looking to the future. We didn't get the strategic plan done, but what I think is missing is we should have a strategic plan that says, we're going to spend these resources. And these resources should translate to an outcome for the students. That's what I'm looking for. What's the outcome to the student? And we haven't crossed that bridge. That's what the strategic plan should do for us. And then if we have measures, as was indicated by the superintendent, we can take a look and say, yeah, we're spending this money and, and the students are getting this outcome. And if they don't, then we modify it. And that's when we look at the budget, that's maybe, uh, we should go to a revenue neutral because we're not getting the bang for the buck. But we won't know that until we tie what we're spending to measures that we can see whether we're getting the outcome. Well, that's, this year, we'd hope to get the strategic plan done before July when we were doing the budget and we could do that correlation, but it, it just doesn't happen. But for the board members that are going to be here, you are going to get an opportunity. When we go into strategic plan, we ought to be making that, that mark on the wall. Okay, we spent this money, but oh, by the way, how does that relate to student outcomes? And next year should be different. Next year should be neutral, but that'll all depend on our outcomes. That's it. Thank you.
Bryce.
All right. So my focus is really on some things that are coming up and I'd love to see the community be more involved. Next Friday night, next football game, and hey, probably ten years or two, oh, I'm really inviting you out to come hear the band because they absolutely rocked it Friday night. Didn't hear it, missed it. Um, hopefully you'll be there next Friday. You can participate. Um, and then on Saturday, ROTC will be hosting the Reader Mate here. If you want to see some really awesome stuff, come see those guys, um, participate. It's, just run it. It's awesome. And then really, it's the count day is on the twentieth of September. And I wanted to kind of shout out to all of those elementary classes and those teachers that have all their kids showing up every day. That's pretty awesome because if they're there, they're learning, you got them, you got them and they're coming. I just wish we could carry that on to the school and the high school. So keep at it and just remember next Friday, next Saturday, come out and support your pioneers. Thank you.
Mrs. Reed.
I wanted to refer to one of the speakers we had earlier. I think it said J. P. Baldwin. I don't want to say that wrong. Um, said he didn't understand why the taxes are going up and wanted an explanation. I hope he got that explanation, but if he didn't, I hope he comes back and lets us know. I want to also kind of reiterate what Ms. Price said. Friday night lights, Friday night football game was awesome. Any sporting event where our students are involved, try and show up, um, whether it's soccer or, uh, like she stated, the, uh, band. You know, is doing new things. We had color guard this year. I think was, uh, something new that we brought back. And so, uh, congratulations to Dr. Pro. I believe with that move and I think that's it for today.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Goodman.
Um, so to piggyback off of, of that, uh, I had the opportunity, it was a football game. That was great. Perfect, perfect weather. Uh, I was perfectly out. Um, I, I enjoyed the military appreciation. So that's always a, a big hit. My dad was there, who was in the service. So, so that's always a great, great thing. Um, also did the, uh, ROTC with the, uh, little kids, bringing little kids in, uh, and have them run the obstacle course. Uh, was able to participate in that. Um, I can, considering where my daughter's at right now, I'm, I'm getting roped into this more and more. So I got, I got to hang up a whole kind of stuff, uh, during that event. Which, which dovetails into, I want to give a special shout out to our teachers. Uh, specifically because, um, you know, ordinary people have a, an eight to five job where they, they clock in, clock out at five and then go home. A lot of our teachers, they, they coach football, they help with the, uh, ROTC stuff. Uh, I'm, I'm consistently amazed at how many extra hours they seem to put in for all the extracurricular activities that our kids are involved in. So I just want to say, uh, just give a special recognition for that. I, as far as the budget is concerned, um, there's, there's a lot of valid points to what you guys are bringing up. Um, one of the issues that the public has is we need to make sure that we are getting the best bang for the buck. Uh, we spent basically the past two months quibbling over, uh, pads for seventy thousand dollars. And, and it's, it's things like that that make our constituency go, no, you guys are, you guys are taking more of my money out of my pocket. And you're spending it on stuff that I don't see a value for. And so as administrative staff, uh, Dr. Adams and, and, and Beth. I know that Beth does a fantastic job. I, I've seen it for the past eight years, but she's been a, a, a Mr. Gella acolyte for as long as I know. Uh, and I know that she does a fantastic job of keeping, but I still believe there are things that we can look at in our budget that are still nice to haves. And we maybe need to get into more survival mode as far as our, our budget is concerned. And I know, uh, you know, Danielle voiced that, uh, her disapproval at us asking questions, but that is kind of our job is to come in and ask questions. And really make sure that you guys are, are honestly looking for the best use of not our money. So with that.
Mrs. Murphy?
Okay, so it's been a really pretty good start for the beginning of the school year. Been in school a little, almost a month. Uh, and it couldn't happen without all our teachers and coaches and staff and parents. So thank you for everything that you do. Um, I'm trying to help because I know sometimes there's creative chaos involved in the first month or so of school and, um, sometimes people still want to pull their hair out. Um, parents, please talk to the teachers. There might be some things that you may want to be a little bit more aware of that can soothe some issues within the classroom. So everyone has a great education and build value within the classroom. Uh, talking about things that are going to happen, um, they're working on the Little Mermaid. So get ready to watch for your tickets. Go on sale to see that. I know you're going to want to see that. And I went to the mini raider boot camp. I didn't go as a board member. I went as a grandmammy. I had a five-year-old granddaughter out there. She was out there with her. She was out there with her, um, Raider twin unite, uh, five-year-old friend of, uh, daughter of a teacher. Uh, they were battle buddies. You don't have to be military to appreciate the things that they were doing. There are tears. There, there are fears. The kids get scared. Uh, our cadets, students and the coaches, you know, the coaches didn't go out with those kids per se. It was all cadet student-led. They had those kids with them. They helped them up. They helped them down. They helped them ease their tears. They helped them wipe the scraped boo-boos in the mud off and bug here and something else there. They were there right by their side. They carried wounded from the field. Um, you name it, these cadets were doing it for these kiddos. This was the sixteenth annual mini Raider boot camp. I believe the charge was maybe five dollars to go, which just helps the, the Raider team with all their future, um, meets and things like that. Their first one sixteen years ago, I found out Saturday, there were three. There probably had to have been a hundred kids out there, at least. Uh, so kudos to the community for, uh, taking part in this and letting their children take part in this. We had international families out there with their little ones. The youngest child, I believe, was two and a half. Uh, and they maneuvered the wall. Um, with my five-year-old granddaughter in touch. But, uh, so everybody has their threshold, but just to watch the students. And that, that says a lot. These all of our students are all future leaders. And applying them to be able to take the younger generation's hand and lead them through so many obstacles, their fears, their concerns, and bring them out to the end of it. It speaks volumes for the things that all our students are learning within the district. So kudos, because it doesn't happen without those teachers, coaches, staff and parents. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And, um.
Thank you. I just want to start off, hopefully, to apologize for you turning drug, even though I'm on a lot of medication. I was in the hospital after, of course. Kind of, but I grew up in a drugstore. So, you know, we got in the same last year about Will and. I'm not a drug. All right, but I do have a little quote here I'd like to recite to everybody. And I thought it was kind of interesting. In a moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing. The next best is the wrong thing. And the worst thing you can do is nothing. With that, we can adjourn.
Hey, hey, Mike?
Yeah.